That's.
Here.
Feiler?
Here.
Fox?
Here.
Heck?
Here.
Hector?
Here.
Coven? Clock?
Here.
Palmer? Chris Miller, here.
Looking for a motion for the acceptance of the minutes that says let's do it up.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Thank you, sir. Roll call.
Hector?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Clock?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Heck, you want to take care of the financial reports?
All right, um, we have, uh, 4.1 and 4.12. What you say is listed?
Any comments?
Fox, second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Clock?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Are there any citizens or students wishing to address the board pertaining to agenda items?
I, I'm just curious for 9.1.1. Curriculum is two hundred allotted, two hundred fifty thousand. I'm just curious if any of that is going to fund training our teachers so that they can teach our students better with reading? Are any of those things allotted? Is that part of the curriculum or is that like physical things like books and stuff?
Cycle.
Yeah, this, this cycle will be more for, like currently we're under a math resource review. So these are like our big, like textbooks, manipulatives, things like that.
Okay.
Training and TV will come out of yearly curriculum.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, reports and recommendation, what's your friend?
Um, I just have three informational items. Uh, first one is a reminder that we will be at BCTC West Tennis Court campus. Uh, next board meeting on the seventh, um, that will start. Uh, there'll be, uh, culinary arts program will put together a dinner for the board, followed by a tour and then a seven o'clock meeting, um, on that night.
We're supposed to be there at six thirty?
I think five thirty, right? Um, we are starting, we do the Easter egg hunt in the spring. We're trying something a little different, um, for the fall. This year we are doing a track or treat, or kind of a trunk or treat, but it's going to be around the track. Um, we have about forty different clubs, organizations, individuals that will be surrounding the track, um, filled with candy, do different stands, dress up. Uh, we have six hundred hot dogs that were donated, uh, six hundred cups of hot chocolate that are donated. We've got chips that were donated as well. Um, and the whole idea is that it's a free event for the community. So that is going to take place at six o'clock on Friday night, from six to eight. So we're excited to have that event. And the most exciting thing is tomorrow, our golf team will be playing for the state title. First time in school history that our golf team has made it. They won district, won regionals, and tomorrow morning they will defend for the state title, which is pretty exciting.
Where is that?
State college.
Cool.
So congratulations to them and good luck. They had eleven oh five today, had a nice send off. Middle school and high school came out, uh, wished them well and kind of lined the hallways and then the front of the building came out of the building, so it's been.
Did you go in wonders?
No, I did not. My golf for the hot dogs.
And tonight our soccer team is in county playoffs against the county sports.
Just started this whole Becker network pop up. Then if they win tonight, then they go on to Saturday. How that location will be determined, right? And that's for the county championship. That's for the county championship. Saturday.
Saturday.
On Saturday. Right now.
That's his, that's his way of saying you keep it moving.
Right, right.
Make a motion for the entire agenda, so.
Um, I was just wanting the track or treat, so is that our high schoolers doing that for elementary or how?
So it's, um, high school students, middle school students. Uh, teachers are setting up stands. We have, um, uh, individual departments, our special, our people service department's doing something, uh, the offices are doing something.
So how is the candy provided? Are they, uh, everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we have people that have donated as well. So we kind of have, I think, I have like two thousand pieces in my office, tennis patch to try to help fill in as needed because we're really not sure.
Yeah.
Is six hundred hot dogs enough or are we going to blow out in ten minutes?
So how many will we have by then?
Well, that's, that's what, how many do we start with? He said he has two thousand in his office.
Thank you. So there'd be two thousand by Friday. Will there be two thousand by Friday?
I did not open the bag. That's in that office. There you go, that's it. Okay.
Mrs. Scott, do you want to take care of eight and nine if you have any other communication?
I do, okay. Nine point zero point one, I make a motion to approve the following job description, certified school nurse. School nurse, current alpine and club and class supervisor.
Heck, second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Coven? Clock?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
All right, moving on to finance, Mr. Heck?
All right. Nine point one point one. Approve the commitment of following fund balance in accordance with GSSB fifty-four and fourth policy six twenty, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, special education, two hundred thousand, per climb, two hundred fifty thousand, athletic facility improvement, uh, one million, five hundred and fifty thousand. And you see the asterisk there, replacement of turf, reservicing of track, an option for tennis court.
Clock, second.
Any comments?
So, um, for the tennis courts, we'll just see what kind of shakes out. Is that, I think that's kind of only good.
And this one point five five million was saved over time. It's not a current expenditure, it's been reserved.
It's reserved.
Roll call.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Clock?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
All right. Nine point one point two. Who, approve the transfer of two million dollars from the general fund to the capital reserve fund as budgeted in the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year for the MSHS renovation project and capital improvement project in accordance with the district operational plan.
Clock, second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Bats?
Yes.
Clock?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes. All right. We hold the billion grounds. Uh, we have a discussion on the property purchase and option discussion.
So that was placed on the agenda tonight, um, to discuss. There is, there has been some discussion about, uh, the Kissling Ball Field. There has been some discussion here and there about other properties for sale. And some questions we've had from the community as well. Uh, and so I think the general consensus was that before we would make any decisions or move forward with anything, that the best course of action was to talk about it in the public so people kind of understood and knew, you know, where we were with a lot of that.
I could jump in. Obviously, you know, with the Kissling property, it borders our elementary school, um, and potentially could have educational value to it, um, along with the ball field. Uh, there was, um, another board member that suggested the property next to Bethel Elementary be, be looked at, um, to secure our boundaries at the Bethel end. I, um, I don't know that I can say I support or decline any of the, the above. I do believe that there could be some educational value with the Kissling property, um, and preserving it. It, again, borders our school, um, and it would make that property whole again. Uh, that property was always part of the school and they, at then they actually donated that land to build the school back in, what year did we say that was? So that was the, the thought there, um, to, to entertain that. And then with the Bethel end, there was a concern about commercial development next to the school and the implications that that would have on the school and what could be put there and the school's safety and, and how to preserve that. That sums up my thoughts. I don't know if anyone else has anything to add. There, um, do we want to take comment at this time? I don't see why we couldn't, we're discussing it.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Moran.
The Kissling property is two properties. The ball field is separate entity.
Just, just recently, um, I also serve on the Penn Township Planning Commission and the, the family is basically using the creek as a dividing line.
Right.
Um, and they intend to keep the back part of the property for themselves and at some point sell the front part of the property. And it is two properties now, it is subdivided, I believe, at this point.
Yeah, because it's the old mill property versus the old farm that they converted into the.
The mill property is actually a third prop, that would actually be a third prop.
Yeah, and then you're talking about Zeller's keeping their chunk off the back. I guess they wanted, what, twenty acres down towards the creek?
So all, if you exclude the, um, mill property, it's about thirty-nine acres, that piece that spans the, the ball field property. So the Zellers are looking at keeping fourteen acres on the one side of the creek and the ball field then includes the twenty-five acres.
So, and some of the conversation that, that we had was, how does that look? How would we even access it? Like, if we can't access it from the school, from my perspective, I, I, yeah, there's value in it, but what is the value? If you can't go from the school to the property for that educational piece? So that was something that has to be looked at and worked through. That's just, that's a, Mr. Bull, how do we handle that? What does that look like?
What do you plan on using it for? I mean, that's.
That's a pretty good distance.
It's a big chunk and then to put a bridge in to get over there.
Correct.
I mean, I don't see the value really. I, I do see the value in the other side to get the driveway and everything else because school doesn't own the driveway, right?
Um, there's a, well, actually there's a portion of it that's on our property, kind of like the, the yellow side is on our property, but the majority of it is not.
Right. So that makes sense to.
Yeah. So the entrance going into that driveway is the Army Corps of Engineer. And then, you know, where our property splits into our, where the, kind of our property go in the back block and then into the Kissling property is then went in. Like, well, it's but up to that one eighty-three is Army Corps of Engineer.
Right.
Kind of switching gears to the Bethel property. Unfortunately, when I sold it a couple of years ago, it sold in the blink of an eye for pennies on what they're asking today. And in my opinion, it's, it's not economically feasible at all, the price type that they have.
Not to buy the whole thing, no.
Should have bought it when it was one point six.
Yeah, because Carl, Carl wants, what, three million for it?
Three and a half.
I think he does, I, I think it sold for three hundred something thousand, not that long ago.
Property's moving.
Did they lower their price on it recently?
It was, it was when Carl originally listed it, it was at one point six. And then he dropped it a little bit and then it went now, he took it, then he took it off the market for quite a while and I started removing the, the log house and now it's at three point five. That's a, with the, with the proximity of that, that's a concern next to the elementary school. That's a huge concern.
As a realtor, what do you see going in there potentially?
I know what Carl wants to go in there. Anything could go in there that would fit into the commercial zoning. You could get just about anything. Um, no, not a warehouse, not a warehouse.
Not a warehouse, not a bar.
Not, you know.
There's zoning within that.
Any sort of small, small business.
You know, you could, you could get a.
From manufacturing to retail, right?
Right.
Retail going, retail, hey, go in.
He wants a, he wants a strip mall, he wants a, he wants a Chick-fil-A, he wants townhouses, he wants kind of like a whole little target community kind of thing going in there.
Got that.
A little off subject, but why does it matter if, if, if he's selling the property? Why does it matter to him what goes on in there? Or are they hoping to lease it back or?
No, just stuff that he likes.
Chick-fil-A?
He likes Chick-fil-A. I'm allergic to Chick-fil-A, so I couldn't care less about Chick-fil-A.
Are there any? Are there any stipulations to building close to school? I mean.
No.
Or is there any?
We had asked that and there was no, Brian, you can speak, there was no regulations or rules. Now, all you.
Your standard setback.
Yeah, beside your standard setback. What we had talked about and, and I still think we should entertain, we'd be trying to get with, like, Bethel Township and saying, hey, could we, could we work together and have some sort of buffer here? Look, your kids go here too, you know what I mean? We're all part of the same community. If there is a Chick-fil-A or something, can we have a buffer zone of something with, you know, a couple hundred feet just to secure that? I, we, we didn't act on that yet, I mean, but that was one of the suggestions to, to, to do, to try and curb some of.
But then that takes away from Carl's property.
Yeah, you'd probably have to buy it. You could buy it and do whatever you want.
Right, right.
Play poppy.
In, in the grand scheme of things with a developer, if it goes that route. You know, you, you could have some negotiation powers, you know, the township certainly could. Hey, if you do this, we can ease some of this, you know, kind of work together.
You realize that.
That was our thoughts. We don't know if that's realistic or.
Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania's a right to develop.
Correct, absolutely.
You know, so that's, that's a huge concern for me right next to the thing. This is more of a Brian question and it's, you know, with the warehouses in, I'm constantly getting notified of child Megan's List people that are working at these warehouses and, and stuff like that. You know, I would think that in that property, you couldn't have a business that could have workers that are on Megan's List because it's right next to the school.
It would be a statutory thing, it would just be whatever the statute, whatever the statute says, um.
Based on what tier they are, I guess.
I think that was some of the discussions that, that were kind of circling is, what, what does that look like? What does the one-year look like? What does the five-year look like? What does the ten-year look like?
Scary.
Around our, around our buildings. And I think that's what prompted some of, some of this, um, discussions.
So what does, what does that look like? What conclusion have you?
Do you have a range one? Do you have a range one there?
I, I still like.
Do you want to weigh in on?
Well, I, I would think you would have some long-range forecast to know what's it going to be to justify.
I don't think we're going to hit a student growth. I don't think that, I think we're more along the lines of like safety issues, what, what more would be in the, in the neighborhood, like as far as population or?
And, and balancing along that, balancing that to an educational opportunity, uh, you know?
And, and what kind of?
How do you?
So, so originally somewhere this, this discussion started, uh, the idea to purchase. So what educational?
Value.
Things have run through people's minds that this could possibly give.
I wish Mr. Palmer were here because he has the, the, the real vision of the, the different ways to go. And Mr. Quirk, you can kind of allude to some. I mean, some was a lot of the science, I'll, I'll start, just the, the sciences, um, of what we could do there with outdoor classroom type space. And then you take that into the, into the ag education type areas where we have more, and not just ag, turf management. I mean, this year we had a state championship turf management team. Can you imagine what we could do with our kids if they had a little bit different place to experiment per se, um, to do some of that stuff? You know, what the educational potentials are. And then with that, that particular property, if you look, okay, what does it cost us to build a new softball field if we had to input lights on? What, what value does that bring to our, to our school district to, to have that? You know, if we want to lighten the bill of a softball field at the high school, what, what does that look like? And kind of weigh, I, I'll, I'll be hundred percent honest, Danny, I don't know that we have an answer today sitting here. I, I don't even know that we have an opportunity in front of us today sitting here. I mean, there's been discussion, but I don't know that there's nothing official at this point, um, to even say that, hey, here, if you want to buy this, it's for sale to you. We're, we're not there yet. Yeah. Mr. Palmer has more of a particular vision, uh, now that Mr. Quirk, he, or he alluded to some of the science stuff that he had already investigated.
Yeah, we had discussed, like, transferring classroom activity to hands-on, real-world application. So ag is a natural connection with it, obviously with the fields that are there, but with that watershed essentially, like we had environmental sustainability concepts that we can do. So macro invertment studies, repairing buffers, um, the new science standards that we have to adopt in twenty twenty-five are all active, so it's all hands-on inquiry-based. So this would be a neat opportunity, uh, or potentially utilize that property for actual in the field studies. So there's some initial application of like curriculum, like taking our curriculum and writing it to build in outdoor classroom type experiences would be something that could be explored.
Do you have the participation? Do you, do you foresee that you would have the, the student participation?
If we built it into the curriculum, like an outdoor school component, um, then it would be, all students would have that experience of being able to get out into the field and, and engaging with the environment and studying over going in the classroom in the field.
Which is hard to put a price on something like that, especially when you don't know, you know, like, and, and I go back to our, our turf team. There's kiddos on that turf team that I would have never, ever anticipated being into any sort of turf or outdoor science. They got introduced to it and they, they literally flourished. And I do believe one of those students is potentially on a scholarship to go for turf management, am I saying that accurate? I don't, I don't know. I know he's going for turf management, I don't know if he's on a scholarship, I'd say. So some of them opportunities, how do you put a price tag on that? I don't know.
Well, if you rationalize it.
Well, yeah, exactly. You know, you, you, I know what you're saying. Yeah, rationalize it. But what dollar value is that? Is that, you know, you know?
So you, I mean, what you're talking, you, you no longer just have the purchase, now you're going to have much more expense.
You, you have some.
And some long-term.
Facility supplies, you know?
You, you, you have much more expense afterwards. And then I'm, I'm sure some kind of structure comes with that and. Yeah.
And that was one of the things that was discussed here. Okay, so if that is the vision, you know, the, the purchase price almost becomes a minimalistic thing. What, what are those involved? Are we building a full-on building there that has, that houses animals, that houses our supplies, that has a classroom, that has restrooms? You know, you could be talking.
Of course you will.
Millions of dollars. But, but what do we need? What, where does that vision go? That's what I think we're, personally, I think we're trying to figure that out right now. And any input we can have towards that is great, that, from my perspective, anyway.
And there's, there's been a lot, there's been discussion that we would potentially like engage businesses as well. So if we were looking to build something, could we go to a particular, you know, fellow events and engage them and see if they're interested in sponsoring a classroom and try to? If the ultimate goal is to get it into be a building based around STEM, then how do we engage those industries to help us build that and not, you know, the district or something?
There are ways to cross over funding and clean and green agricultural grants and then build partnerships with like Rodale and other institutions in the county that work with those kinds of programs that already have those lines into the government on, you know, federal and state level to kind of kickstart a lot of it. You know, you have the land, but everything else is a huge purchase algorithm. You know, it's kind of like start small, build up. That way, if start small didn't work, you ever separate something from it, trying to save face, but just looking at the, the increase in education like Rodale uses these days and the amount of funding that they pull to do a lot of it, you know, building from one end of the county back over the other, I think they have a pretty good reach.
And you hit the nail on the head when you said, we have to start somewhere. So yes, there are all avenues that have been discussed, like how do we go? What resources can we pull? But it's really tough to even pull a resource. Just at this point, hey, there might be land for sale. Do you, do you know what I mean? Like you could have a, a general vision and I think every nine of us here and every administrator has a little bit of a different vision of how that could look, but I don't know, you know? And I, I do agree, there's definitely, there's definitely funding out there for on the, if you went on the ag side of things, definitely there will be funding there to do stuff.
Think even if you get into like the forestry management or, uh, I got here from one of the fellow people in the neighborhood that works at the game lands down here, one eighty-three, yeah. You know, they struggle for help with people who have the knowledge to do that job. Yeah, they can hire anybody, but like they have no skill set, they don't know what trees look like or leaves, you know, just.
Well, we have.
More, more blue collar-ish jobs.
We have, we have to have the willingness of the bodies to want to do that.
You're correct.
That percent. I mean, we can put it there and, but we still have to have the bodies and the mind that want to do that. And what if they don't want?
Let's face it, it's hard work.
But sometimes we need to introduce stuff to.
Yeah, I think the first part of that is getting some of these kids outside and have a, out of the classroom.
Out of the LED lights.
You're speaking more on the leadership side.
Yeah. Exactly. Oh, you're looking at more leadership, why the student box?
Well, no, the student box. You have to have the students that want to be engaged in that, want to, want to get engaged. That tends to be coming less and less.
I, I would concur, but I also think.
But you, you are right, they, they have to be introduced to it. And again, that, that, what expense?
That one expense, that's exactly right there.
Well, I think we also talked about the population of our students and the parents and where they're coming from, that it's a good bet, if you will. But I like Mr. Quirk's way of looking at it, saying, hey, from the beginning on up, kindergarten, first grade, we're getting them out there, whether it's once a week, once a quarter, and starting young, the, the growth and the interest and the enjoyment of outside work and what that could mean for you. Because there's lots of kids that I knew that they didn't want to go to college. They didn't know what they want to do, but they sure didn't want to go to college. But if they were introduced to this kind of work, they would have latched right onto it because it's not in a classroom with a book sitting, you know, it's, it is hard work.
I agree, I agree with you there. You got to start them out, you know, I do it, but that's.
So I mean, I think that's some of our vision, Mr. Palmer's vision, that this is great for our, our kids who are going ag, you know, the tenth, ninth graders, they kind of already have sense, but let's, let's engage the entire school. I mean, this is an awesome opportunity. We can't just take them out on the playground and show them crops growing and how you fertilize and stuff like that, whereas we can take them and they can do it, where they can see what the ninth graders are doing. And you could do this when you're a ninth grader. And you could do this when you're a 9th grader, you know? And you, so you can, I feel, inspire an interest in something that's kind of already in our community to a degree.
So, yeah, it has to be engaged to all and not, not so much geared to ag. Our ag community is actually, it's shrinking. Farms are becoming larger, which is less people to do it. And there is a group, the Mennonite group of people are purchasing our farmland rapidly. Not good or bad, that doesn't matter to me. The point is their children don't go to our school. So it has to be geared to all, to other sciences, not necessarily ag. The hands-on animal, the hands-on old-time ag is not gonna work.
Right, and we've had those conversations of like the crazy amount of offshoots that exist within the agricultural field of not just the traditional farming that someone who hasn't experienced it really kind of lives by. So using that, I mean, all kids K6, it's phenomenal. We give them an egg special and a stem special. And we're being more intentional about teaching, you know, more of the biological, physical and chemistry-based sciences in class. So free opportunities where we're incorporating concepts around STEM that, you know, we could utilize that space. And I agree with you, not just putting all our eggs in one basket. You know, broader experiences and utilizing the resources we have.
So I, you know, like I, I'm not gonna sit and post it, it's not, that's not gonna do much. I just think it needs to be thought through a lot. There's a lot of money gonna be spent after a purchase. And it's all in the name of educating our kids, I guess. And which would lead me to ask the next question. How, is our school a failing school? Or are we above the levels that the state has set aside for academics?
We're certainly not failing.
Are we on any plans that we're?
So we are. Our current, the middle school, high school, based on their attendance data, is on what's called ATS I. It's an additional target for our school improvement.
See, we are failing.
It, what it does is, part of what the reason is, is because certain of our subgroups that we have, namely special education students, the attendance is not where it should be at that level. So that is one plan that we are on. When you look at our state testing across the board, we, growth-wise, we're making progress and exceeding progress. When it comes to hitting some of the competencies and the proficiencies, it's a mixed bag. So are we seeing growth in some areas? Absolutely, like from last, from two years ago to this year, our elementary math scores increased. But in one of the buildings, the ELA score dropped. The other elementary, they stayed stagnant. So we had, you know, mixed levels of that. So I wouldn't say we're failing, but I wouldn't say that we are where we should be.
We're not quite proficient.
Right.
So my point in that is, if you have a business and you're failing, you don't go purchase other things that you have really no idea what you're gonna do.
Get this right first.
So if we're, if we're gonna throw money at something, let's be proficient. But you're doing, I think we're doing our kids an injustice by not making sure that they're proficient. Whether that starts with you, whether it starts with the board, whether it starts with the teacher. I'm not sure, but somebody's failing the students. And as a taxpayer, it's hard for me to say, yeah, I agree with you spending money while our students are failing. Does that make any sense?
I think failure is a harsh word. And I think if you look at every person in this room, every person out there in our school district, we could all do better on things in our personal lives, in our relationships, in our own management of what we do. That doesn't mean we're failing.
Sure, but now, I know for, for eight years now, we have not been proficient. So there's a disconnect somewhere, or we would be proficient. So, all right, I won't use the word failure. Let me just say we're not proficient.
Danny, I think, I think we did take a lot of measures in the past. And you sat here and helped take some.
But we still are not.
You're right, we're not. We're not where we want to be. But for the first time in a very, very long time, we have a vision of how we're going to get there. Meaning educationally-wise. We have filled the gaps and some would say, oh, you know, we're maybe overstaffed. I feel like we made some very good hires in the past 24 months. And you were a part of them at the end of your, you know, as, and you sat here and said along with us, we need to figure this out, what do we need to do? You know, you helped in them conversations to build that foundation. And bringing Dr. Corky as, and Dr. Math, to build this plan. Now we finally have a solid plan that I feel very confident in. But it's kind of like you just don't flip the switch and it's fixed. It's going to take time to implement that plan and follow through. And you know what? I'll be the first to say, this plan don't work? I was wrong. Because I don't know what else we can do.
I'm not disagreeing with you. It's just hard to sit and spend more money. Because the new school, when it's done, that's gonna help the students, right? And they're gonna be proficient. Because the building is all.
It's all part of it. It's not the fence.
You and I both know that that's not gonna be.
It's not going to be.
It's the staff that, and curriculum, that's gonna do that. I would rather throw money at that than property that we really don't know exactly what we're gonna do.
And I, the tool that we're measuring proficiency is a standardized test across the state that's been created by a company that wants to profit. And that's the measure to which we're measured by proficiency. Whether we like it or not, that is the proficiency. And I would argue that a single test, you know, we have, you know, the high school's 29% special education and we're required to put certain SDIs in place to accommodate specially-designed instruction and goals to be able to give them support to be successful. And then the state comes in and says, here's the test to which you have to test those kids on. By the way, you can't use those accommodations. You can only use two or three of the accommodations, which is helping them read it, read it aloud, give them extra time. So there's, there's an imbalance to which we're being judged. But I would say, you know, when I look at, you know, I just attended a meeting with BCTC and 30% of our high school last year attended BCTC, our student body. Like I look at that as, that's a success for us. Like that's a, to be able to say that we're the highest district in the county sending kids to a technical school, yes, you know, chances are those kids, I don't want to say those kids. Chances are, a lot of our BCTC kids are not getting that proficiency on the test. And so there's a choice. Do we hold them back and say, no, we've got to keep you back and remediate you? Or do we say, you know what, in life, you're gonna be way more successful going to BCTC than this remediation class? And those are some of the challenges and decisions we make. So I think when you look at some of that data, we've chosen on our side to say, that test is not the sole measure of the success of our kids. Like at the end of the day, if we're taking 30% of our school and advancing them on, and if you look, near 100% of our kids hit their competencies by the end of BCTC, that to me is a much more successful measure than how they score on the PSSAs. Now what I will, or the keystones, what I'll put as a disclaimer is, it's also our job to make sure that they're proficient in math and reading to the level that they need to be successful. To me, that's a better measure than saying, hey, you mastered the biology keystone, you're proficient or you're distinguished. You're successful. I'd rather see them be a very competent, successful welder than hitting the three keystones proficiency. And that's, and that's where I struggle, like, you know, yes, are our proficiencies where they should be? No. Are we hitting where the state average is? Yes. Why? Could we do better? Absolutely. And I think that's where, you know, our team is trying to figure out and develop those plans in place. So how do we get, how do we, how do we still keep those plans in place of BCTC and all that? But how do we also equip them to be successful on the academic side?
And I agree with you completely that having a welder who in the end can read and does his job well or hold him back so that we can get him to the standard, neglecting him being able to be trained meanwhile, it's not a straight, easy course.
I do not advise it.
Yeah, and we've heard, as you know, through the years, that we're down here and here's the state standards. But I've heard Mr. Hammack for a couple of years come to us as a board once a year and give us their reading things, the English, what we're very concerned about because we get to read thank you notes, some of them right, and we're like, eh, they still need help. But we, there is a plan and I've heard it each year and I'm very glad. Bringing on Dr. Kirk, he is finding out what the new requirements are. So we were heading for these, oh, now science is up again, now, you know, throw the huts in the air again. But we have, I feel, and with Dr. Matt, like people in line that are gonna say, yep, this is where we're not proficient. This is what the state's asking. Well, you're building a plan, here it is, teachers, go for it. And so I feel like that's the most you can do. Do we want our kids to be pulled up by next year? Yeah. Here's the other issue, Danny, that I'm sure in the back of your mind, you know, and we've talked about as a board. Being a good student, back when my kids even were here, also requires a great family structure. Not always, but it sure helps the kid. So if they go home and they're struggling reading, and I love to read. So I would sit with my kids and they'd have a problem, but we just read anyway. And there's so many kids and the family structure is just being torn down, torn down, torn down, for whatever reason. And these kids come home to maybe nobody at home, or maybe one parent who just worked 10 hours and is trying to make dinner and just get to bed. And these kids are left trying to figure out on their own. And I feel sad for that, but that is also, I believe, part of the problem. We cannot fix that. No one can fix that. And it's the kids that, you know, we talked about overstaffing and sometimes I'm like, oh my gosh. But they come here and this is all they have for somebody to come alongside them and say, I'll help you with your homework. So I don't think, even as Andy brought out, that test isn't exactly, but I think society is pulling our kids back. How do we change it? I don't know. Other than having what I've heard Mr. Hammack talking about and Dr. Malik and Dr. Kirk putting the plans out, working our hardest, you know, the teachers and, and if they fail, I believe now, we as a board, we've seen the numbers and they're alone, it's not good in the past. But now we're seeing like, look, we came up, you know, we came up, we came up. And it's like, yes, did we come up maybe enough? No. But I feel there are so many factors in these kids' lives. Even we talked about cell phones and everything they're exposed to. There's a lot on the kids' mind, not like when I grew up. I didn't care about anything else in the world, I had fun. I went home, did my homework, went out and played. That's not where these kids are anymore, so, yeah.
Well, Dr. Burke's, I, that vision, like I like that vision of putting that STEM, allowing them to do it. Is that something that, so if you want them, them students that have, they come here for something, that they have not, not much at home. So can you get them children at an early age and get them into that? And do you need, to begin that, do you need a property, like what we're talking, to do that? Or is that something that can be done or should have been done in a new school building? Add to that.
Water over the dam.
Is that, is that something that should be started here? With what's existing already? Is there a possibility of that? You know, to get them young, the first graders, started in that?
Well, I know that I've heard in the past, like we would take the high schoolers out. I know there's that ditch where there's water and they used to do studies, it's my mind from way back, I don't know when. But they did. Yeah. That they were trying to do with the high schoolers and use what we have. This is just an opportunity that's come our way that we're looking at and we're going, it's this or it'll be never, and that's fine too. And we're not talking about if we would look to acquire it, like now we're gonna go build. We talked about small, we talked about busing kids first year, building a program, seeing where the interest lies, building curriculum, you know, step by step.
Well, they'd have to be bused there regardless, they're not gonna, they're not gonna do their whole day's education at that, whatever that facility would look like. So they have to be bused to cool.
So I mean, I think an answer to your question, Danny, is regardless of whether we purchase the property, yes, we should be doing it. You know what I mean? We should be, we should be exposing that. And I think this year, you know, we didn't, we hit the pause when we lost our elementary ag special teacher so that we could then reopen it and hit the timing right and have a very energetic ag teacher. We have a great STEM teacher in place. So I think driving that and pushing that is, regardless of whether we purchase the property, we still need to be moving forward and giving those hands-on opportunities.
Circling back real quick to the Bethel property. I'm sorry. April keeps that word circling back. Going back to the Bethel property. I think unfortunately, it's gonna be a wait and see what happens game. And if you put yourself in the property owner's shoes, the reality is it's an investment for the owner and they're going to look to maximize their investment. And if I were them, I certainly would not give up acreage off that property till I knew what direction I was going in. So I think the price tag's just out of the question, in my opinion. You know, as Kyle would say, I'm one of nine. But I think it's a wait and see and at some point sadly, we could end up with 35 fence going down across there to keep people off our playground and whatnot.
Well, if you wait long enough, you can make them pay for the fence.
Well, that was, that was some of what our discussions were.
And currently, it's off the market, just so you know.
Engaging Bethel Township to, hey, look, this is one of our concerns. How do we work together? You know? Bethel Township students, go to this facility. It's in your best interest to kind of help us to navigate some of them channels, to work together. And just have that open collaboration and start them discussions now before the wawa and the chick-fil-a, whatever, whatever it may be. Just, hey, it's a concern and kind of, kind of talk through that. That was kind of where our thoughts were, you know, if it's something, to Mr. Vibeiro's point, that it's just not feasible to reach now. Okay, so that's crossed off. Now we need to move on to how do we protect our, and some of our students. And, you know, open collaboration, I think is the first.
And, you know, open collaboration, I think is the first step in anything, is to talk about the problem, you know, how do we come to a solution? And I'm not saying it's a problem, but how do we, how do we prevent a problem?
It could be a lot of years before something like that.
It could be, and you know what? Some farmer that says, hey, I want to farm that land, says, I'm just gonna buy it, and it's a farm threat for him. But you never know.
Oh, and then say thanks for the discussion.
I appreciate your discussion, Mike, Danny, I was a little nervous when you walked in. I didn't know that. Very good. No, it was very good. I, yeah, I appreciate the open dialogue from, from my perspective. It's, you, you gotta look at, in, in our shoes, sitting here, it is our job to look at every opportunity and every problem and decide what needs to be done. And I think that's the stage we're at right now, is trying to, to identify, is it an opportunity? I, I still think it is an opportunity, but is it an opportunity for us? That's, that's the discussion, I think, where we're, where we're still at. If we're good, we're gonna move on to policy. Have that, Mr. Heck.
All right, 9.3.2, give second reading and final approval of the following policies, 321 through 827.
Off second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Clock. Yes. Fox.
Yes.
Hedrick.
Yes.
Feiler.
Yes.
Chris Miller. Yes. Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
All right. 9.3.2, give first reading with the intent to give second reading and final approval of the number 21st, 2023, the following policies. It's gonna be 701 through 718.
Off second. Any comments? Roll call.
Clock. Yes. Fox.
Yes.
Hedrick.
Yes.
Feiler.
Yes.
Chris Miller. Yes. Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
All right. 9.4.3, approve the retiring of the following policies and to consider listing 713, 718.
Off second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Fox.
Yes.
Hedrick.
Yes.
Feiler.
Yes.
Chris Miller. Yes. Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Clock. Yes.
Right, moving on personnel, this is off the, of course.
9.8.1, I make a motion to accept the resignation of Deborah Miller as a middle school art teacher for the purpose of retirement effective Jan, January 11th, 2024.
Heck second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Fox.
Yes.
Hedrick.
Yes.
Feiler.
Yes.
Chris Miller. Yes. Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Clock.
Yes. 9.8.2, I make a motion to approve the appointment of Crystal Thompson to serve as student risk and threat assessment. Oh, gosh, I'm gonna bring just my interventional list, in addition to her role as a school psychologist at an annual statement of 4,000 effective October 18th, 2023.
Heck second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Hedrick.
Yes.
Feiler.
Yes.
Chris Miller. Yes. Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Clock.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
9.8.3, I make a motion to approve the following coach resignation, assistant middle school cross-country coach Jason Mabek for the 23-24 sports season effective October 16th, 2023.
Heck second.
Any comments? All those in favor, put a seven, say a "aye".
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
9.8.4, I make a motion to approve the supplemental contract of the following coach position for the 2023-2024 sports season as listed.
Heck second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Chris Miller. Yes. Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Clock.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Hedrick.
Yes.
Feiler.
Yes.
9.8.5, I make a motion to approve the following volunteers for the remainder of the 2023-2024 school year as listed.
Heck second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Clock.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Hedrick.
Yes.
Feiler.
Yes.
Chris Miller. Yes.
Just a question on the assistant basketball coach, is that one of our grads, or I'm just curious. I'm not even tired. Sorry, if you don't know, talk to Mark.
The name sounds familiar.
Yeah, it doesn't to me.
Sorry. It did to me.
Good, okay.
Anyone have any old business? Anybody have any new business?
I'd like to call out a thank you to three people in particular, but all the students and parents that helped with the homecoming and the pig roast. Three people in particular come to mind, the Mabek family, who donated the pork, Bill Palmer, who asked, could I not say anything, but he's not here to defend himself. But he started the pork roast and stayed till 1:00 in the morning. And then Chris Hammer came middle of the night, 1:00 AM, to take over and finish things up. So a little side note, hopefully next year, we can find the volunteers so that our principal can be better rested, I guess, for, for the evening festivities. But those families and their, their volunteers have certainly helped make it a very successful event.
I think we'd be remiss if we didn't include yourself in that thank you, because I think you were there, because I fell asleep and got, to have that evening.
That's all right, I, I went on my own. Thanks.
Chris is a mountain graduate. He's not, okay, thank you.
All right, calendar events is listed there. Citrus sale coming up, looks like. Pitcher retakes. Has anybody missed the first pitcher tie? Is there anyone wishing to address the board yet this evening?
There was one thing that I, I did edit. Somebody can make it very quick. Just give me an overview and a, a little bit of an understanding of what the district operational plan is. What does that mean?
So.
Because it was with the, it was in there with the finance, you know, and we're putting money, and that obviously fits the way following that policy, that plan.
So if you remember, a couple of years ago, we did a technology plan where we basically said that year after year, we would try to lock in the technology equipment at, I think it was 260,000 is what we budgeted every year. We're, we're trying to do the same sort of thing for the operations, for early and grounds. So we put every year aside $500,000 into the budget, that then gets transferred to capital reserves to, to maintain the buildings. The carpeting we just recently did here, that would come out of that. And so tonight, kind of as you came in, was Matt kind of going through the operational plan with the building and grounds as to what year over year looks like. Some years, you know, we're, we're pushing that 500,000 based on the, the projects, and that includes, you know, vehicles needed replaced, it includes roof replacements, it includes sidewalk, flooring, I'm trying to think of some other things we talked about, windows, any additional projects that are, that are looking, that we're looking at doing, power washing. So a lot of that is that we keep a stagnant, that, not that we automatically spend, kind of what we do with the technology, that 260 is not an automatic, you can spend it, but 500 is consistently in the budget, that we have kind of a guideline to know if we've got a roof in three years coming up, then we also want to stagger our project so that part of that 500,000 is going each year to the roof as well.
Okay, so that, I get you, yeah. That's.
I think that might have been your vision, actually, to do something like that, if I remember correctly. I don't have to.
Well, then you had the idea.
Anyone else? We will be having an executive session for real estate and looking for a motion to retire.
So. Heck second.
All favor, put a seven, say a "aye".
I like it.